And Maggie Zhu, they're the Cantonese interpreters. If you can make them panelists, they're on the guest list. If you can make them panelists, please, thank you, that would be Maggie Zhu and Sunny Quoc. Thank you.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot streamtext dot net forward slash player? Question mark, event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like an ASL interpreter can use a Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide public comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelist and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is the Spanish interpreter. I've noticed that my Cantonese colleagues, Sunny Quoc and Maggie Zhu are not part of the panelists. Can you please promote them to panelists so they can give you the announcement? Thank you. SFUSD offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please enter the phone number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes, el dictador escolar unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el chiching del número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduce the clave. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis. Seguido de la tecla gato o tecla numeral. Gracias. We're still waiting for the Cantonese interpreter.
I'm showing that they are on the invite. Let me resend it.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. We're still waiting for one of our interpreters to get online.
They're in the guest list. You can just promote them to panelist from there. Is it Maggie? I got it.
Thank you. Yes, please. Thank you.
Ah, with the announcement,大家好，今晚我们会提供广东话的专业服务。好的，大家好，谢谢。
Thank you. That concludes translation services.
Good evening, everyone. We're about to start, but before we reconvene, I will just wanted to announce that there's childcare from six to nine P M for children ages three to 10 in the enrollment center right across the hall. And also that there is public comment under section E, public comments, which includes for agenda items and non-agenda items. If you're interested in making public comment, please go ahead and turn in the card over here with Mr. Steele and indicate whether you're speaking on the agenda items, which is the workshop items or on something else, which is not an agenda. And if you're a student, please write student on your card. Thank you. All right. I now reconvene this meeting of the Board of Education at six thirty-five P M. We do not have a report out from closed session yet because we are still, we're going to return to closed session at the end of the meeting. So the report will be after that. But we're going to begin our regular, the open session at this time so that members of the public can join us. And I want to start off by naming that there has been a blitz of news in recent weeks about significant issues. As I think many of the folks here know, some, I recognize some people who were here on Sunday at the special meeting. And, you know, as, as these issues became known to the board, we needed to act decisively and swiftly, which is why we had the special meeting and why we're asking the city for help and support. We know that our students, staff and families deserve a stable school district that can really provide educational experience that our students deserve and that sets our students up for success. Our job as the board is to represent the vision and values of the community. And that means working with the superintendent to hold him accountable and to ensure that he gets the support he needs to succeed. We also know that systems issues are never caused by one individual and are never solvable by one individual. This board is committed to working with Dr. Wayne and his leadership team to tackle the significant challenges that our school district is facing. There are really so many really talented staff in this system and that is not lost on us and we really value those contributions. And I'm really grateful to Mayor London Breed for responding to our request for assistance and agreeing to send us a team of city experts who will be working at our direction and our staff's direction so that, so that we can really be collaborative. And we had a great first meeting today, the board, board leadership and Dr. Wayne with Maria Su and Phil Kinsberg, who are going to be chairing that committee. And I think it's going to be really collaborative and I think it's going to really support our school district to take on some of our fiscal and operational challenges and get to a more stable place. And so this is really the moment, I think we said this on Sunday, this is the moment to take those things on because those fiscal and operational challenges have made it so much harder for us to achieve our academic goals. And so we as a board are saying, and the superintendent is committed, and I don't know if you want to add anything, superintendent Wayne, but we are committed that this is the time to take those, those challenges on once and for all and to really set this district up for success moving forward. So I just wanted to thank everyone for your understanding of that process and, you know, assure everyone that we're, that we're moving forward with a stronger plan and with help from the city. So, did you want to add anything?
Sure. Thank you, President Alexander. And yes, you know, it's, it's hard to believe, but we've only been in school for about a month and a week. And both the start of the school year, as always, was exciting and I'd been out in schools and got to see students learning and our educators there and ready. But this start of the year did bring significant challenges for us as a district. And we've made a lot of important long-term decisions to address those challenges, like adopting a new financial system that we know will help set us up on the right path for, you know, planning our budget so we're, you know, managing our finances responsibly and allocating funds where they need to be so we start the school year with everything in place. But those long-term decisions, that one is an example, you know, we won't really see the benefits of it until next school year. And the issues that we have faced the first month of school, you know, can't wait for that. So I appreciate the, the Board of Education recognizing the urgency, naming the priorities that we need to address and then reaching out to the city for support and then supporting myself and our leadership team in addressing them. And so, you know, kind of the sleeves were already rolled up to get to work, but I'm going to roll them up even higher and know that while there are many great things that happened at the start of the school year, these issues that we face were, were, you know, working to resolve them as quickly as possible so the focus can remain on student learning.
And student learning is actually the topic of our agenda tonight. So we will have public comment on non-agenda items if folks want to speak to other issues, but I want to remind the public that our agenda items tonight are two critically important workshop monitoring sessions. The first one is on eighth grade math and the second one is on college and career. So the Board of Education, two years ago, set really ambitious academic goals and our superintendent and team have been working toward those goals. And tonight, you're going to hear my progress update and a discussion with the board on how it's going in terms of our progress toward the eighth grade mathematics achievement and college and career outcomes. Of course, it's impossible to, to achieve those goals without the fiscal and operational systems in place. And so again, that's why we met on Sunday. That's why we're taking these, these really unprecedented steps as a board and as a district to get the help we need to be able to solve those systems once and for all. So let's move forward. So we're going to move into public comment and we will have, how many cards do we have?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, great. So the, the plan is we're going to do an hour of public comment. We'll do twenty, the twenty-six cards we have in person and then we'll do some online. And then we will jump right into our workshop session and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. So nobody indicated that they were a student, but if you turn in a card and you are a student, you can come and speak first. And just state your name when you come up if you choose to.
Yeah, that's how they report. Yes.
So you can just go ahead and line up and then you'll have one minute each. So you can press the button once and state your name.
All right. My name is Kins and I'm a member of YMac. Okay, some issues that we feel is that if you were to merge schools, it would cause a problem for the distance for some people. Some people live near the schools that they want to go to. And also another issue is pretty much people are used to the areas that they're in. They already feel safe in the environment and it just wouldn't be fun to go on a two-hour, a three-hour drive just to go to school. It wouldn't be fun.
Thank you. Press the button once.
My name is Sobe. I'm kind of downtown high school.
Hello, this is the interpreter. I'm sorry, we cannot understand what you're saying because you're too close to the mic. I'm sorry. Thank you.
See, and I'm kind of downtown high school and I'm a YMac member. If you ask me how I got here, it's because of all the big schools I went to, such as Washington, didn't work out. I wish I would have landed in the small school rather than the big one. Closing and closing schools made me feel anxious and I can't imagine my friends for it because we're in like social anxiety, so it makes it hard for us to be able to meet people. We have a reason to close all the moral schools because they're not even self-righteous. And we don't want to be too bad. Especially the people from different other worlds, not being the same, whatever, so we don't really want to do it. I also have something, something I want to look up. I'm trying to narrow schools together, you know, brutal, narrow is one reason. I'm trying to draw a picture. I closed a lot of things, but this one is bigger. And I felt hurt by the idea and knew the reality. Schools, students with social anxiety, and that's real. Can you get a sense of how it's fair? You haven't considered how unfair it is for our people.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alan and I'm a student at June Jordan School for Equity. You know as well as I do, the closing schools isn't going to do anything but save you a couple of pennies. Why do my peers and I have to sacrifice our quality of education and use our resilience because SFUSD has a budget crisis? Why do I have to spend months and months worrying about whether or not the school I've spent the past two and a half years at might close? Does that sound fair? No, it doesn't. Cut from the top. You are not doing anyone any favors by hurting the people you are supposed to be supporting the most, your teachers, your staff and your students. I have been to almost every single one of these board meetings and board of education meetings as well as attending the community sessions and I have not heard any of our questions answered. I have not heard how the superintendent plans to support teachers and students through this. You as a board are supposed to make sure that Dr. Matt Wayne makes decisions that are best for the students. You are not doing your job. Keep him, keep him accountable. Don't play politics with my education. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Henry Mooney. I'm a student at Roosevelt Middle School. My message is plain, short and simple. Don't close the schools. We deserve it. Cut from, as the last kid said, cut from the top. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Alex. I'm a student and not a number. I'm here to speak against the proposed closure of June Jordan School for Equity from a student's perspective. I'm concerned about the path of my education and how things are going to be in the near future. As a junior, the impact is going to affect my senior year. If it were to close, I cannot imagine how it would be seeing everyone leave the many walls of our home environment we call June Jordan. The Board of Education is failing to acknowledge the black and brown students often choose small schools for their unique community-oriented environments. In smaller settings, teachers and staffers better equipped to understand and address our specific needs. The district's span from thirty to one student-teacher ratio directly undermines the benefits of small schools and does not reflect equity. While I understand that the need to consolidate resources, I urge the board to prioritize equity in this process. We cannot afford to close our doors, especially as our communities are facing systematic challenges and now we risk the best education environments available. Small schools served as an essential for hubs of education and social services, services fostering a sense of belonging. I ask that the equity criteria be weighed more heavily in discussions about school changes. We are frustrated that mismanaged funds are impacting schools. Most importantly, please remember to engage our students and community.
Okay, so we do have one for an agenda item. So we're going to call that person now. Supria.
This is Supra. I wanted to comment on the student outcomes item that was on the agenda tonight and thank you again for continuing to hold these outcomes meetings because this is what the focus of our school district should be on, how our students are doing. And I'm very concerned though that looking at the numbers on college and career readiness, under about half of our students are actually college and career ready. And I understand that we're graduating students at a very high rate and I'm wondering where the disconnect is there? If we have high graduation rates, why are students not ready? We're stuck in the weeds. Everything I wanted to comment on was related to this, which is that the focus should be on the students and should be on student outcomes. What we saw happen this past weekend, an emergency meeting that was supposedly about the superintendent's performance evaluation that came out with things about the city helping. Frankly, I'm glad the city is helping. I hope they can help. But this was not an item that was a matter of emergency and the crisis of the road for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all we have for agenda items. Can move on to none. So I'm going to call five people at a time. You can come and line up. Alexia Obol. Joanna Sturgis. Brandy Markman. Lauren, I think it says Hams. And Roberts from Coleman or Roberto from Coleman, excuse me. You can come line up. You can go ahead.
Hi, I'm a mother to three kids at San Francisco Community. I'm here tonight because a tiebreaker for families affected by school closure was supposed to be discussed. And my question is, how can you even consider this very sensitive topic prior to any meaningful discussion with affected families? Kids whose school will be broken apart will have many needs. I have a fourth grader who was in kindergarten during COVID. He and his friends took years to recover. They have built meaningful relationships and they are so proud of their achievements. SF sees a project-based school and the projects have been very focused on the community. And now you are telling them that it takes just ten months to break this community up and send them away to other schools for their fifth grades through a random lottery system? That's your solution? You can't even guarantee that there will be any spots available at any specific schools for kids coming halfway through a K five cycle. You need to scratch this process and start by listening to the real communities you are trying to shadow.
Thank you.
I am here to advocate for keeping language programs co-located with general ed programs at multiple local schools. My son has been in the Mandarin immersion program at both Star King and Jose Ortega, both fabulous schools. Only reason we switched schools is because Jose Ortega is closer to home. We have three kids in three different childcare settings and I just have to prioritize being at a local school. So we chose FSUSD for two reasons. The first was for its MI program. It's my family's language and background and our heritage, so I want my kid to have that. Second reason we chose SFUSD is for its diversity. Both Jose Ortega and Star King have general ed programs co-located there and I love that my kid gets to interact and socialize and be friends with kids from like all different backgrounds. So, you know, I have a newborn at home and I'm not here today because I don't have other things to do, but, but because I potentially have eighteen more years of educational decisions to make and really hoping that SFUSD will make it easy for me by maintaining the availability of MI at multiple neighborhood schools and that also continue to have a general ed program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Brandy Markman. I'm a public school parent and I am just appalled at the absolute sham process of closing schools. I moved to San Francisco from Chicago where fifty schools were closed. It was a disaster. It was gentrification. It was genocide. And you are following the same plan. They're the same school privatizer dollars. They're the same real estate industry dollars going toward basically pushing this toxic narrative that we need to close schools. You've said it before, school closures do not save money. We are organizing in this room with parents from Seattle, with parents from Pittsburgh, with parents from Boston, and they are all saying that you are using the same playbook as they are in their schools. This is not fair. This is unjust and this school closure process needs to stop immediately. Hands off of our schools. This is all about push out and attack on our SFUSD families and we know what you're up to and we know the billionaires who are behind the recall that put a lot of you in office.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lauren and I'm a policy organizer over at Coleman Advocates. Through this current school closure process, we've seen an inequitable and intransparent plan for how, when and what schools will be closed and how families, students and educators will be supported in this process and afterwards. We're advocating for a pause to this process until the district can actually show community, an equitable, transparent and fully supportive plan, as well as a plan to meaningfully engage community in the decisions that affect them. At this moment, the district really needs to prioritize how to fix their fiscal standings so that they can meaningfully invest in schools and keep our educators and families in the district. As we know, closures only result in short-term and small savings that will ultimately result in further declining enrollment as families have shown that they are not willing to risk their children's educations and future opportunities. Thank you.
My name is Roberto and I have the kids in the school district. I'm here to talk about two topics. One is don't close the schools. It doesn't make no sense when we already know that we're not saving any money by closing the schools. Now, when I, when I take my kids to school, I always told them, make good decisions, learn from your mistakes and make good decisions. That's what I'm saying right now. Eighteen to twenty years ago, we closed the schools in San Francisco. What have we learned from that? Okay? That doesn't ensure that our kids get quality education. And my school right now is several teachers missing. Let's focus on hiring teachers for the schools. Okay, let's focus on our kids. Thank you.
Calling the next group. Elias Flores. Jenny Flores. Joseph Carter. Reyna Teo. And Brandy Bowen, I believe you can go and come to the mic.
Good evening, everybody. I just would like to say, please do not close any school because the kids loves to go to school every day, you know, and they are the future of our country. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brandy from Coleman. Our members put together a rally earlier today because the timeline hasn't changed and school closures are going forward, but the district is not prepared to make that happen. It's still so much that needs to be planned. There's a lot of things that are not in place. People have already come up and talked about how this has affected other places. It's created violence across communities. People haven't had social emotional supports already in this district. So we need to really pause and give our community the space to be included and to stop the school closures. What happened in the spring with the surveys and the lip service town halls, we haven't seen a plan that includes what came out of those things and we aren't confident that that's going to happen this time. So we hope that with all the changes that are happening, that meaningful community engagement, especially for our youth and our students, are centered right now.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joseph Carter and I'm representing Malcolm X. The current situation is in San Francisco, Apollon. We have people, you know, drugs out on the streets, schools closing, resources being disbanded by governments, local and federal. We should never have closed schools for anyone using. Those are our next generation is growing and developing and learning how to be good people. My daughter loves going to school, even though she doesn't like waking up for it. I pick her up with great stories of staff and students and what she learned during the day and I would hate to see that end. It's a well-known school with great teachers, programs, staff and students, has a great culture and a love for children and a love for learning. Malcolm X's literacy rates and mathematic rates have been on the rise every year and that's true for most students and reoccurring. I know my daughter's interest in learning and just everything that's grown and improved and I'd hate to see Malcolm X close.
I just want to make sure I'm far enough so we don't get feedback. Good evening. My name is Reyna Teo. I saw you here on Sunday. Dr. Wayne, I've seen you at several meetings. I just want to make sure we don't miss the mark. Really, don't miss the mark this time. What I want to see is a plan to involve community, parents, students and teachers. This advisory help from the mayor, I'm sorry, I don't have any confidence in that. She has a bunch of money tied up right now that the community needs. They won't be released until December, according to her. So I don't believe in false solutions. I want you to come up with a plan to include our voices. Genuine conversations, not surveys, no more paper. Those things cannot replace conversations. And we need to start with the right question. How do we make SFUSD better so that people want to come to the district so that makes more money come into the district? That's the conversation we need to have. And I would like to ask you to please remove any items on your agenda that have to do with school closures and so you can figure out how to make the most impact on closing that gap in the budget. This is not the solution. I'm looking forward to the next meeting. You will see me here again. We're going to get really cozy.
Thank you.
So please make right choices.
All right, I'm calling the next group. Fatima. Brendan. EJ. Allison. And Jose Luis Maria.
I can start. Hi, I'm a teacher at June Jordan. I just wanted to add my voice to the continued chorus that is reminding you all to center the lives and education of our black and brown students, especially at a small school like ours. On the surface, it does look like, you know, two hundred students, thirty-some staff. Why not just close the space and disperse everyone? But what you don't see now is the depth of human relationships which are at the core of equality education that lowers affective filters and maintains enduring understanding in academic content. These are core tenets of equality education that we cannot ensure in a larger context. It's not feasible and has never been. Your approach to the budget deficit in this district is only solidifying the reputation SFUSD has as a segregated and racist district. We can't do what we do at June Jordan anywhere else. It's not qualitatively or quantitatively possible. I urge you to be more creative in your decision-making process and to consider your legacy and impact as a district more authentically and transparency with all your stakeholders. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I grew up in SFUSD and I saw firsthand how the district makes our most vulnerable students pay for district mismanagement while those at the top include. for district mismanagement while those at the top, including you all, play politics. Even so, I came back to work in SFUSD as a teacher because I'm committed to quality public education for all, not only those who can access the levers of power or test well. As a first-year teacher, I have experienced overwhelming support and care from the staff and students at June Jordan. Every single day, I learn how to be a better educator and a better person by working in such a close-knit community that strives for excellence in teaching and in social justice. It is shameful that this district is moving to punish some of the hardest-working students, teachers, and educators and all the people in this room without transparency and without community input for mismanagement problems created and sustained by our central office. Stop playing games with our students' education. I implore you to do your job and protect our working-class students, our students of color, and particularly in this time, our Palestinian students. The solution is clear and I echo my students, chop from the top.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ernest EJ Jones and for the last hour-plus, I've had the opportunity to listen to parents, to listen to students, to listen to advocates about their concerns around school closures. But beyond that, every day, I get to hear from community members who are actually just very concerned. They have a lot of anxiety around what's next. And as a former employee here at SFUSD, I know it's not hard, or I know you have a very tough job, right? But what I ask of you is to be transparent as much as possible with our community members, but also use our community members as a resource. We have a lot of people here today that would be willing to support you in this process, that would be willing to bring you into community, to share the information that you have and to help you along with this process. So again, I'm here to support community, but also to be a support to you and I hope that we are able to come out with the best outcomes for all the people involved, the students, the families, and the community members that are supporting these students and families. Have a great day.
Good evening. My name is Allison Brobman. I am a parent at Galileo and a member of our PTSA board. I think we all do some transparency. Someone on this board needs to finally admit that Dr. Wayne was hired to close schools, that A.J. Crable was hired to guide you in closing schools like he did in every previous district that he was hired for. And Dr. Wayne closed schools in his previous district. It's time to acknowledge that the high school task force was a sham and you've done nothing with all of the work that we parents put into that. It's time to acknowledge that you have not been communicating with us. It's time to acknowledge that so-called adult issues affect our student outcomes and it is worth talking about them in these meetings. So I'm just asking you to listen to these kids, listen to what our students are telling you, not close schools, and just be honest with us.
How y'all doing? Good evening. My name is Jose Luis Takul Mejia. I am a parent member with Coleman Advocates and Parents Making a Change. I'm also a father of students here in SFUSD and specifically at SF Community School, right? That is on y'all's list to get cut. I want to definitely echo what was shared, but I wanna just speak to this, like, I know y'all do a hard job. I appreciate it, right? I know most of y'all personally. And at the same time, so I really just wanna urge y'all to not fall, right, for that okey-dokey. I know we're getting a bunch of regional, local, even national attention, right, trying to use a lot of the efforts as well as a lot of the challenges and a lot of the beautiful successes that we've had over the years around ethnic studies, around equity, around restorative practices, and demonizing those things. And I just wanna urge that we please don't fall for that. Don't, we're, these are your constituents. We are the voters, right, and you are gonna lose your positions. And we urge you, right, to take it serious. SF Community School is one of those schools that is...
Jose, this is your time.
Thank you. But it's small by design and...
One of the few project-based schools that have succeeded.
I'm gonna call the remainder of the people. It's a little more than five, but I'm gonna call everybody who's left. And forgive me if I mispronounce because I can't read some of these. Amparo Alarcón, I believe, Alexis, Ava, Rajni Bantia, Sheri Lynn, Cadence, and John Soderstrom. You can come to the podium whenever you're ready.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Amparo Alarcón. Soy madre y abuela. Y estoy hoy aquí porque me preocupa mucho el cierre de las escuelas. Al contrario, en vez de cerrar escuelas, tienen que poner más maestros, que es lo que necesitamos. Y yo tengo la oportunidad de tener hijos. Tengo hijos y ya está en la universidad, está en high school. Pero también tengo nietos que ellos necesitan estas escuelas que ustedes piensan cerrar. Así que, por favor, necesitamos esas escuelas. Necesitamos más fondos, no que quiten las escuelas. Así que, por favor, hoy es el día estoy acá para pedirles que sigan teniendo abiertas esas escuelas porque cerrar no es la solución. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Amparo Alarcón. I am a mother and a grandparent. I am here today because I'm very concerned about the closing of the schools. Instead of closing schools, you should be hiring more teachers. That's what we need. I have the opportunity to be here. I have children and my kids are already old. They are in college. Some of them are in high school, but I still have grandchildren and they need those schools that you're thinking of closing. Please, we need those schools. We need more funds. Do not close the schools. So please, today, I am here to ask you to keep the schools open. Please.
Hello, my name's Eva. I am a parent and a social worker in San Francisco. I use they/them pronouns and I think I just wanna echo everything that's been said. You know, doing social work, I've worked as a school social worker and these schools are hubs for access to food, mental health care. And I think that if we're trying to focus on raising student outcomes, it's really hard to learn when you're hungry, when you're dealing with trauma, with mental health crises. And, I mean, you all got into this because you care about children and you have the values that I think we share. And so I'm urging slowness, a connection to values, transparency, and building off of everything that we've built. My daughter is a first grader at SFC and she was really shy and she's coming out of her shell. She's engaging with the projects and her sister already feels like a community member there and I would hate to see her not be able to join that community as a student and a learner. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity for comment. My name is Regnie Bantia. I'm the mom of a second grader at Jose Ortega in the Mandarin immersion program. We urge the district not to consolidate language programs. We've heard about the proposals and we urge the district to maintain co-location of language immersion programs, not just the Mandarin, all of them, with general education to ensure our schools reflect the rich diversity of San Francisco. It's why many of us chose public school and to stay in this city. We know wall-to-wall immersion programs could result in segregation in schools that are demographically homogeneous and we feel that integrated schools give our kids a more well-rounded experience. If you are gonna move forward, though, with consolidating or closing schools, we urge you to seek community input on where we want our children to be rather than arbitrarily assigning our children to schools all around the city. We also urge you to do more to attract and retain families. There's many families that would choose public education but are dismayed by the poor outcomes, by a lot of the challenges. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sheri and I'm the parent of two Aptos middle school students, two graduates of the Star King Elementary School Mandarin immersion program. I believe in the power of quality public education. I'm the proud product of public education. I see families leaving SFUSD because of dropping standards and chronic instability. I know that the Mandarin immersion program attracts and keeps involved families in SFUSD. We should strengthen and build on the success of the language immersion programs. In San Francisco, I see the will to work towards a better future, but in practice, we seem to stumble more than we succeed. Educational basics has suffered in attempts to innovate education. Whole word recognition, instead of phonics, making learning to read in English like learning to read in Chinese. One-size-fits-all math that doesn't fit most well. Investment in an HR system that doesn't work. SFUSD must do better. San Francisco must do better. We must do better if we want a better future.
Good. Evening. My name is John Soderstrom. I neither have children nor am I involved in education as a career. But my topic that I was wanting to talk about was other funding resources. State funding models fail cities like San Francisco. Only municipalities can correct this with city funding. I attended the emergency meeting at nine AM on Sunday morning and it confirmed my impression that the inadequate state funding ignores local issues of cities as expensive, as expensive cost of living as San Francisco. Childcare has become unaffordable, but education is childcare. Sunday, the president of the board spoke about examining the future possibilities for education. When I started kindergarten in nineteen seventy-one, was the same year the courts decided the state should distribute funds, not keeping it in the district. So no matter how high you raised your school district taxes, it had no effect or benefit because the state decided how to dole it out. San Francisco is an expensive city. I experienced the cutbacks in the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties and the terrible difference it made between my baby boomer siblings and myself. School closures do hurt children and I am running for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes a public comment in person. Thank you, Mr. Shiel. And let's go to online public comment. I think we have about twenty minutes, maybe a few minutes more.
We will now, we're moving on to a virtual public comment. If you care to share your comment, please raise your hand. Each speaker will have one minute to speak. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Este es el momento para poder hacer sus comentarios públicos. Esto es para los personas que están en línea. Todos aquellos participantes tienen solamente un minuto. Gracias.
Thank you. Erica.
Hi, thank you. My name is Erica and I am the parent of a kindergartner at San Francisco Community Alternative School. I've met some of you and I wanna thank you for your advocacy for our youngest San Franciscans. Wanted to remind the board that less than one year ago, the San Francisco DCCC passed a resolution that said, and I quote, "The San Francisco Democratic Party supports the preservation of SFUSD schools and calls upon the district to explore alternative strategies which do not involve school closures or consolidations and to conduct transparent assessments, engaging community stakeholders for at least five years before closing or consolidating schools." Five years. Here we are, less than one year before the start of school next year and we're talking about closing schools. If closing schools is in fact going to be beneficial to student outcomes, first of all, the community would love to see that data. Secondly, the community would like to be engaged in meaningful dialogue about what is going to happen to our families.
That is your time. Thank you so much. Aaron.
Yes, hello. My name is Aaron Horn with Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco and I'd like to speak to the agenda items tonight, but in terms of the eighth-grade math and college and career readiness, but in light of students in special education, it has come to my attention that in the last month, students with IEPs have not received any of their IEP hours. And this is critical for our students with disabilities to keep up with the district norms. All these children want to do is fit in with their classmates and if they are not able to have that individual time with their, and with their special education, they will not be able to achieve these goals and stay up with, in line with their fellow classmates' grade level. And this is particularly alarming given the task force that was formed. None of them have, seem to have special education or any education credentials and we need that as imperative, especially for children in special education, to be able to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall.
Oh, thank you, young sister. To President Ahmad Alexander, to Senator Wade and everyone assembled, commissioners, everyone assembled here today. I, we keep saying to you, do not close any schools. Use your resources that you have to keep all the schools open. Use a five-year plan, two-year plan, three-year plan, but whatever date you choose to announce to the public, announce it. And this past Sunday, I don't know what that was, it wasn't a parent meeting. When you have a parent meeting at a specific time and place, you must inform every parent of a registered trial in SFUSD to attend. I don't know what that was. Any decision you made shouldn't be null and void. So I've joined all the families and speakers tonight. Do not close any schools or whatever. Again, whatever date you decide to give the parents and give the public the information. And I wanna thank Mayor Breeden and her team for coming over to cross the road to SFUSD to help us save the district for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom.
My wife and I are special education teachers in the district. We have two students in the district. I just wanna say, you know, when people said the superintendent inherited this, he chose to apply for the job. No one forced him to do that. He's getting paid a lot more money than teachers and staff who are working day in and day out on this. And I think what you're hearing from families and staff is that there's not a really good plan. You know, we've been in, I've been in the district ten years, which is a long time for a special ed teacher. People, you know, HR is a big mess. We need to fix that. You can't have student success if you have people who applied months and months ago and then, oops, oh, we don't have the job. They're gonna go somewhere else and they're not gonna come back. I feel like that's a very basic. And, you know, things need to change, but it feels like we keep saying this and the same people keep saying the same thing over and over and then we just hear the same lip service. We're committed. We're gonna do right. But when is that actually gonna happen? Like, reach down inside yourself. You're getting all this money, the superintendent and all his people. For what? Now that the mayor's gonna take over and her people to fix yours? But what about staff when we need help? We don't get that.
Thank you, Tom. Nadia.
Hello, sorry. My name is Nadia Conradvik and I am a parent at SFC, San Francisco Community School. My son is in first grade and he's actually a special ed student, or I'm sorry, he's a kid with autism, so he is in mainstream class and he has a research teacher. And I know that we have been struggling with staffing at our school. There's been, it's been very tough this year to get fully staffed. However, with this uncertainty, I am still hopeful about how SFC has been created. In nineteen seventy-nine, it was created to be this small school. It was created to be the first of its kind to really be able to allow students to have these small classrooms, this community feel, this family throughout the kindergarten through eighth-grade journey that they're on. So I'm really urging you to really look at schools that are small and understand that these are important ones that need to be saved. I also want you to think about the fact that our students are already struggling with mental health. They don't get enough support.
I'm sorry.
All right, I, okay.
A gentle reminder, there will be one minute for each speaker. We have quite a few more. Can we just have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? It will be one minute per speaker.
Se les recuerda las personas que están haciendo comentarios que solamente tienen un minuto para hablar. Gracias. Chinese. Please note, the发言 time is one minute. Please.
Thank you. Charles.
Yes, as a taxpayer in San Francisco, I want accountability. In regards to the MOUs with CBOs, where is the mandatory anti-grooming training in these contracts? where is the mandatory anti-grooming training in these contracts for employees that work with kids? After the reports of what was said by the mission graduates employee arrested earlier in twenty twenty-four while working at Everett Middle School in the SF standard, it should be mandated. Please add that to your contracts before approval. How many schools would not have to close if SFUSD did not have to pay out numerous seven-figure sex abuse lawsuit settlements? I would also encourage everyone to vote no on the school bond in November until they can produce actuals for all previous bond expenditures. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alondra?
Hi, my name is Alondra and I'm a parent of a second grader at San Francisco Community School. I am here to echo what fellow parents and advocates have been asking for, here to urge for transparency around decision-making and the processes that you guys are taking in in regards to school closures. I'm here to advocate what I was asking for last time, to please take into consideration the children and their education. As leaders that with so much power, I just want to urge you to please, 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 take these children to consideration. My son is constantly asking me about his school closure. You know, he lives at school and there's many ways that us as parents and community members want to support this process. And so we are here as advocates to urge you to consider us as the parents, as the thought partners, as the leaders of our children and our communities. Like, we can collectively together figure out how to do this. And there's been many, many suggestions in this meeting and last meeting. And so I urge you to take
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm going to say I don't find myself in community with this board and this superintendent because I am not in community with people who use language like rightsizing, talk about a school district. Public education is a public good. We are not a business and how dare you pretend otherwise. I'd also like to note that the reason why you want to close schools, which you now admit will not save money, is that Matt Wayne intends to cut five hundred classroom teachers next year. Already, we have high school classes above forty. Elementary schools, after four years of consolidations, are bursting at the seams. You cannot have student outcomes with classes this large. But moreover, despite the need to cut eight percent of site staff for budgetary reasons and declining enrollment, Matt Wayne presides over the largest unrepresented management team in district history, a team that received two substantial raises last year. It's time to chop from the top and stop pretending that you re-sign
Thank you. Back for special education?
Hi, this is Habba Kelly. I'm calling about two things I'd like to say now, agenda item. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Alexander for opening up to virtual, but to respectfully ask that we're given the same amount of time and opportunities as in person. As far as agenda items, I'd like to respectfully ask, once again, that progress monitoring data, planning, metrics is inclusive of all students. That includes students with IEPs. As well as, this is not agenda. I am asking for the superintendent team and/or commissioners to reach out to special education family and educators. Right now, we are in a crisis. Our families are struggling. We need authentic communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Parents for Public Schools?
Good evening, everybody. This is Vanessa, the executive director of Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco. I wanted to first thank both Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Lamb for their prompt attention to Parents for Public Schools' care regarding the district's fiscal and operational capacity. I do think that there is a lot of work to do and as an organization, you know, we promote the value of public ed. So definitely want to support you and how to do that. Today, I want to talk about chronic absenteeism real quick. If you look at the current dashboard, which you can find online, you're going to see some declines in chronic absenteeism, but you're also going to see some pretty serious increases. And I like there to be more attention to that. I know you guys are so overwhelmed. But please have your teams work with your site principals and think of prevention and intervention opportunities so students can receive instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarita Lavine?
Hello, my name is Sarita Lavine. I am a teacher in the district. And I just want to echo the same exact concerns of everyone who spoke before me about closing schools. And especially the decision to put London Breed in charge of that process as a support. London Breed cut forty million dollars from early childhood education and then gave that money plus thirty million dollars to the SFPD, which is already one of the most well-funded police forces in all of California. So how can we trust this person to not then capitulate to big business privatization and charters? We can't. I feel the concerns of all the other parents who spoke. You all have hired Matt Wayne in order to close down schools. That's his record. Now that you are being exposed for that, you are too cowardly to admit that that's what's happening. That was the emergency meeting. And so I just want to remind you that closing schools is racist and this district is supposedly about equity. Black and brown students, disabled students are the ones who will suffer the most from this. And I don't know how you can sleep at night hearing these children cry to you about how important the schools are, hearing staff cry to you about how you're ruining their lives for your mismanagement.
Sarita, that is your time. Thank you. Efraim?
Good evening. Could you make it hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Efraim Barrera and I'm a parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler. And I'm the director of the Latino Task Force. And first off, I want to note that it is no coincidence that there is not a single comment in support of the resource alignment initiative. We keep hearing that in light of the district financial challenges, hard decisions need to be made and that school closures will result in better outcomes for our kids. Yet, we have yet to see a comprehending plan that justifies the destruction of the school communities. A plan that will solve the many crises that are plaguing our schools. We know that decisions are being made behind closed doors and in the end, there will be a vote to close many schools and uproot the students and the families that have built communities. And so we ask you to please consider the many, many voices that are pleading to stop this madness. Please come to community, hear us out, include us in the conversation so that we collectively can address the crisis and reach a common solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I just wanted to shout out to Tom, also a special ed teacher with ten years in the district. I attended the special ed training at the beginning of the year. And one thing that was really notable was one of the bottoms of the PowerPoint said, "We are getting sued more." And I think that really speaks to the fact that this board and the district has not done a good job in paying attention to the needs of special educators and how they need to be able to serve their students. I'm at Yacuola Elementary School right now. I'm watching our K-two mod severe class, not have an SEC teacher. And that's not because we don't have an amazing principal and a great content specialist and a great supervisor. It's because there's no candidates. No one wants to do the job because, to be honest, we do a very hard job and we're not compensated in a way that makes sense. If we move outside of the district, we get compensated more for the job that we do. I would really encourage the board and the district to look at how they're compensating special ed teachers because I'm going to take on some case management for that class. I'm hoping that I get compensated for it, but at this point, I don't really know. Thank you.
So I'll call Lisa, Leilani, and Anna. Again, that will be Lisa, Leilani, and Anna. Lisa, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm a parent of two students at San Francisco Community School. I want to start by expressing my thanks to those commissioners who listened to the concerns of the community, shared in those concerns, and pushed for a delay of a closures list. I urge you to continue to ask thoughtful and probing questions. I wish we were talking about how to increase enrollment tonight, how to make the school district more attractive to families and educators rather than talking about ripping school communities apart. Where is the community engagement centered on how to build a more successful school district? But if you're going to force the conversation of school closures, then I want to stress the importance of transparency, of sharing a fully developed transition plan for closures with the community. Families, students, educators, school staff deserve to know what to expect before ever seeing their school's name on a list. Any plan should have robust discussion and input from the board and the community. If closures continue, this must take time and must not be rushed. It must be careful and thoughtful with meaningful community engagement. Thank you.
Leilani?
Hi, good evening. You know, I just want to remind everyone that twenty years ago, we talked about smaller school sizes, smaller classrooms, neighborhood schools. Merging of schools caused issues twenty years ago. And even in the last five years, we've heard of when populations merge together, sometimes it doesn't work out. I specifically remember a parent last year talking about their child being bullied. A young lady came to the board, seven years old, complaining about being bullied because culturally, they were not accepting of her as a black student trying to learn Cantonese. I don't think that a merging of a schools is a good, a good plan. We're not fully, you all are not fully able to take care and manage these these emotional issues that are happening. The other thing that concerns me is that parents in groups are foraging the school board and they're not responding. You all are not being transparent. And so when you're not being transparent to our foraging requests, we're worried.
Thank you so much. Anna?
Sorry, had to get off mute. My name is Anna Gracia. I am also a parent at SF Community, as you can see, advocacy is roping at our school, which is great. I'm frustrated that it seems like every board agenda, this one says, okay, you can weigh in on the process of priority when the school closures happen, as if this is a done deal. And that's really frustrating because everyone here is standing in front of you saying, please don't close any schools. And then the agenda just continues on like no one ever said anything. Like, we're expected to just cede the point without ever seeing any sort of realistic reason why they're being closed. Everyone's saying they don't save money. If, if that's really the cause, like if they save money, then we need to see the proof. Secondly, I was there on Sunday with my daughter and she spoke to you. And I just want you to think about the fact that students, like she's not even going to be affected by that school closure. She's leaving her school. And yet, it was so important to her that she's getting up on a Sunday morning to come talk to you about it. Like, this is how invested everyone, this is how wrong everyone knows this is.
Thank you. Thank you. And our last person will be Galen.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Hello, this is Galen. I'm also a parent at San Francisco Community School. I would like to acknowledge that some of you have accepted our invitations to visit. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. We look forward to seeing you, President Alexander and Commissioner Bogus on Friday. But Commissioner Sanchez, Lamb, Tim, and Vice President Moore, we are impatiently awaiting your response. Dr. Wayne, we would also like to ask that you attend parent meetings at every single school that you're consolidating or considering to close or merge prior to making any rest decisions that will affect these students permanently. You must close schools, the least you can do is come and talk to the real people who will be directly affected. In fact, I totally, I can't agree more with Anna. I hate that this item is on the agenda tonight to talk about how you're going to make it happen when we haven't seen anything about the plan. Like, bring us to the table. We're ready. We have ideas. We are the experts with lived experience. Why aren't our thoughts and students' needs being considered?
That is your time. Thank you so much. President Alexander, that concludes a virtual public comment.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the members of the public who commented and particularly, I heard, excuse me, loud and clear, a request to be involved in the process. And I think that is something that SFUSD has struggled with and that the board has asked and will continue to ask and support our district staff and leadership in ensuring that there's meaningful consultation with community members who are impacted by decisions. That's actually one of our guardrails that we've laid out for the superintendent. It says that whenever there's a major decision, that there must be meaningful consultation with the students, families, and staff members that were, that are going to be directly impacted by that decision. So just want to say that we appreciate hearing that and the board in representing your vision and your values as a community, we are aligned with that. So, thank you. And we will now be moving on to the progress monitoring items. First, the math, eighth grade math item.
Thank you. I think, oh yeah, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna stay here. Yeah. Did you want to say your thing before we do the? You're going to frame it? Sorry. So, a few things. First, I do want to appreciate the comments in public, you know, the comments we heard tonight and echo Commissioner Alexander and President Alexander, just in understanding, there's a lot that's happening in our community now and a desire to be heard and engaged in conversation and know that's, that's what we need to think about, you know, how, how we're doing that. And then, since we do need to go, since you had mentioned we need to go up to closed session, we can just have staff present and then still give the reports, if you don't mind bringing the reports. And then, I think for the, this is a progress monitoring and we're doing some things a little differently tonight to try to foster conversation. And so Vice President Vice President Moore is going to say, speak to that. I will then also, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Aguilera-Fort. No, you can go ahead.
Thank you. So this is, I think, mostly to my colleagues, but also relevant to staff who are presenting on the monitoring report. In the past, we have voted on the monitoring report, deciding whether to accept or reject the report. And board leadership has met, President Alexander and I met. And we've had an opportunity to reflect upon the past few months of monitoring sessions and the degree of productiveness of the conversations. And specifically, in thinking about how we wanted to engage and learn from staff presenting on the monitoring sessions, we were surprised, maybe we shouldn't have been, but we were surprised at how the monitoring conversations didn't feel as productive as we had hoped. And in speaking in I statements, or we, on behalf of board leadership, I think the board feels like we have contributed to this lack of productivity. Upon further reflection, it became clear that by framing the entire conversation around having to reach a final up-down, accept-reject, yes-no vote, it limited how we as a board engaged. And how we engage has an impact on how we collaborate. And how we collaborate has an impact on how we can improve our students' educational experiences. And as someone in the legal field who teaches law students, I know how it is way easier to poke holes, way easier to find problems and to, and critique. And I think to my colleagues, I would just encourage us that the purpose of these monitoring sessions is to be curious, is to ask questions, is to gain insights from the experts that are here to talk to us and to learn about what's going well and also what hasn't. But it's not to criticize or attack or belittle. And so to that end, in addition to sharing that we're not going to be voting on the reports, I also just want us to, I want to encourage us to approach reports, I also just want us to, I want to encourage us to approach the conversation with humility and with curiosity, because I think we're going to learn a lot more from you all, so.
So I think what we're gonna do, Dr. Wayne, if you, I don't know if you are there framing, but we're gonna do a brief staff presentation, and then we're gonna ask commissioners to go around one minute, maybe 90 seconds each, and say whatever questions you want to raise, and then we'll, then we'll give staff a chance to respond.
Yes, and then just as we introduce this report, you know, in the Council of Great City Schools framework, it asks that the report is one to five pages. Now, I'm gonna say is, we as educators have a lot of information we want to share when we get these opportunities. And so most of our previous reports have been longer than one to five pages. And A.J. Crable's guidance also is that they're straightforward and, you know, understandable to even a non educator reading them. So you're gonna see, this is similar to you. We want these to be productive conversations, and so we were thinking, maybe the over, you know, the details we were providing lent the conversation to go too deep into the weeds, rather than thinking overall, how are we, you know, what's just our main strategies and, you know, our theory of action for how we're going to improve student outcomes. So this first one in particular, you'll see, was a three-page report, and not for lack of, of information we could, could share, but again, in the spirit of having productive conversations, we wanted to try that. So our presentation will be similarly brief, and then we'll get to the discussion. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Aguilera-Fort to introduce the team presenting.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Good evening, members of the board, and good evening to the community. Karlyn Aguilera-Fort, Senior Associate Superintendent of Ed Services in Schools. As the superintendent, the board president, and the board vice president stated, today we are not going to go over the entire report. We will jump in right into a very brief presentation, and we will make reference to the slides as needed as you ask those questions. So without further ado, we have with me, and this is another aspect this evening, as integrated units, we have now the representation of the school side of the house that has been working on this implementation, Ms. Jennifer Stein, she is the Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools. We have Ms. Devin Kootman, she is the Executive Director for Content Areas in Curriculum and Instruction. And we have Dr. Moon Ha Kim, who represents a research planning and accountability, who supports us throughout all the analysis of these data. Without further ado, Ms. Devin Kootman will take us to the next level. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So we are going to roll through the first couple of slides pretty quickly, but again, in the service of brevity, we have a couple of key actions that we wanted to focus our time on. If we can go to the next slide. Do you want to start?
Just a quick review of the data. We've seen downward trends in our performance in eighth grade aspect math over the last few years, which has led us to modify the targets that we have set leading into 2027. So the modification of the target is represented by the, the blue line, dotted line. So the target for this current school year will be 45%. Next slide, please. Despite not having the target that we had set, at the interim goal level, actually, the outcomes have been a little bit more promising. The STAR assessment results are fairly comparable with the SPEC results, and what we have seen for all the interim goals is that the student groups have actually performed far better than what they did in the interim assessments during the school year.
Thank you. And just to summarize on the next slide, we wanted to quickly name in a summary of school year 2324, some of the significant successes and challenges. The major point that we did want to highlight specifically, as some folks may remember from last year, there was a heavy emphasis on supplemental supports, particularly Dreambox and iXL and YZAN, as we were in the process of evaluating Tier One core curriculum for piloting. And so some of those successes, where we saw high quality fidelity of implementation of those supplemental tools, we saw strong student gains. However, the scaling of that high quality implementation with fidelity was not as broad as we had hoped. And you'll see in the plans for this year, some shifting in that strategy as we work on the expansive piloting of Tier One. If we can go to the next slide. We wanted to start with a summary of our theory of action that organizes all of the strategic actions in service of Goal Two. I believe this is best represented when looking at this slide from right to left, starting with the ideal student impact, and looking for specifically the shifts in teacher practice in Tier One associated with Guardrail Three, and therefore the corresponding actions of our departments and divisions. Next slide. Since last reporting to the board on Goal Two, with regards to the K8 Tier One Core Curriculum adoption process, we did complete the evaluation and selected programs for piloting. At the K5 level, those programs, you can see the scores and the criteria for evaluation are Imagine Learning and iReady, a unit to be piloted of each, similar to the Language Arts piloting. And then for grades six through eight, it's a full year piloting of the Amplified Desmos curriculum. Can go to the next slide. We wanted to highlight both in K5, and I'll speak for a second in six eight, the launch of that pilot. We are excited to have really expansive piloting at both grade bands. At the elementary level, we have 159 teachers, which exceeds the Language Arts pilot by about 50 educators. We have 54% of school sites represented. They are about to transition from the piloting of one program into the next. But thus far, in the professional development and office hours that we've offered, you can see some of the strengths and challenges that teachers have shared regarding that piloting. And similarly, again, to Language Arts, we've engaged in extensive data collection with TNTP through surveys, focus groups, classroom observations, et cetera. Next slide. Again, we're really excited for the breadth of piloting happening, particularly at the middle school level in grades six to eight. Somewhat shockingly, we have 87 teachers piloting, which represents 66% of all general ed and special education middle school math teachers. We have 18 school sites piloting, all but three who have grades six to eight. And just to be specific, that's for courses in Math Six, Math Seven, Math Eight, and Algebra One. Given the full year piloting, we have more extensive supports offered to these teachers than in K5, with additional instructional guidance, collaboration hours, release days. And again, you can see some of the feedback on initial, additional, or initial professional development thus far within the school year. I do want to name specifically in both these cases, teachers are piloting the most highest rated programs in the educator evaluation of curriculum, and we do have high retention from teachers who participated in the evaluation into the piloting. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to Stein.
I had an opportunity to talk with some students and teachers today about the pilot, and they are very excited about it. In terms of how we're supporting both, both the teachers and the leaders, we're partnering this year with ANET. We had initially planned to hire additional instructional coaches, but because of our collaboration with the CDE, we pivoted to hire an external organization called ANET that's going to support us with pedagogical practices, not specific to amplify, but rather around how do we support deep mathematical pedagogical practices in the classroom. So they're both supporting the teachers through coaching, through calibration and walkthroughs, and the school leaders. And then also, the school leaders come together, all six eight school leaders, even the K8 leaders, because I get the privilege of supervising them as well, get to come together monthly to talk about how to examine classroom practice. So in addition to the nine middle schools that will be selected by ANET, all of them are engaging in how do we examine math practice in our classrooms, and how do we use the court rubber to do some. And then, if you go to the next slide, there are two schools that have chosen to participate in lesson study this year that are middle schools. We know that last year, the expansion of, of lesson study began in elementary, and this year it's now expanding into middle. So Willie Brown and Persia are piloting lesson study and very excited to do so. And I think that we're really going to see some interesting ways that joining this professional learning community, enrolling in courses with Dr. T, and joining the Teacher Leader Fellows will help us to examine how that's supporting mathematical understanding and professional learning. And that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that clear, succinct report. So let's whip around with board members here. Maybe we could, thanks, and do you want to start? I don't want to put you on the spot. No, you don't want to start. Let's start on the other end. That's how I was gonna start with Commissioner Fisher. That's what I was thinking of. And we can just go around, and everyone can take a minute or two max to say comments or questions, and then we'll, you all, if you all could just listen and take notes and decide what you want, you'll get to decide after we've all spoken, what seems most valuable for you to respond to. Does that make sense? Okay.
No pressure going first or anything, but I'll, in the spirit of brevity, thank you very much. Appreciate all the information here. I think mine is really just a clarifying question. We heard in public comment their request for disaggregated data by focal populations. So where can community, community members find that if they're interested? Is it, we've talked about a DAG board in the past? Is that data publicly if, if folks want to access it?
Yeah, so just say, yeah, we'll answer at the end. Yeah, great. Commissioner Lamb? Commissioner Sanchez?
I guess, oh, thank you for the brief report. My question is really around the, is it YZAN, the tutoring program? Just, I noticed it didn't come up in this presentation, but on ours, just the, the lack of students that were involved in the tutoring. And I just want to know more about why you think that was? And, and it does lay out some future initiatives to get more, but just a little deeper dive into how we can, and also, how much are we spending on it? If, if there's 25 students that took advantage of it, and 1,500 kids were identified for that support, just like how that break down, broke down financially?
All right, so now I remember my question. Just wanted to thank you all for the work and, and the presentation, so very important. One thing I wanted to follow up on is related to the challenges as stated in the presentation on slide number five, around significant decreases in budget and staffing, has, you know, resulted in that decrease professional learning and coaching. So my inquiry is, given also our future, where we're at today, and also knowing the, the difficult road ahead, what are some considerations, or how are we approaching budget, budget approach perhaps differently, enhanced? How are we also looking at leveraging maybe underutilized? I know Title I funds is something we have talked about, being really focused with that, but also perhaps other state or local funding?
Great. My question is to focus in a bit on the successes. So on slide 11, it says huge academic gains in math scores in three elementary schools, Sanchez, Muir, and Flynn. I'd love to hear a little bit more about that. I assume it's connected to the lesson study project, but would love to hear kind of what your analysis of why, why we're seeing those successes, and how you anticipate building on them.
I also had a question around the successes, and it relates specifically to the pilot. So really exciting to see 66% of middle school teacher, math teachers, participating in the pilot, and seems like the earlier and more robust sort of the buy-in, the more likely we are to have success in terms of teachers wanting to engage in this and use these pedagogical tools and curriculum. So my question is, what did you all do? What, what changes were there that allowed, that sort of got so many of these teachers to want to participate in a pilot? Because let's be real, it's extra work. I mean, it, it, it requires more. So would love to know what that looked like, so we can make sure that more continue to want to engage in future pilots.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I want to double down on Commissioner Lamb's question around capacity of the central office. It's my understanding that the math team is down to one now. And so my curious question here is like realistically, just what, what does partnership with central office look like with schools? If ANET is coming in, which I'm really excited to hear, I'm curious, when does that work begin? Has it started? What do we know about our ability to partner with them? Have we partnered with them in the past as a district? So kind of related to, both related questions. The other, is Imagine Learning illustrative? That's the same version, right? Is there any confusion or concern around Amplified Desmos being a standalone six-eight, and for there to be any sort of gap in the content between iReady and illustrative K5? It's, it's a question that I have, because I do believe Ampli is coming out with an elementary version, and I'm curious just if we've seen that, or what that looks like. And, and, and I don't think it's ready yet, but I'm just curious about where we are with that. And I know that there have been questions in the past around number of minutes regarding math instruction and the CDE requirement or recommendation with our minimum of 205. I just, I know that was a big question of conversation last time we were talking about this, so I'm just curious if there's been any answer to that so far. Thank you.
Right. My question, I think, really kind of centered around some of the challenges that were lifted up in the presentation and the reports, and not really seeing clear strategies to address them as we move forward, and was hoping you could address that. And a spiff, and, and really specifically how it relates to us being significantly off track, and how those strategies and plans for those challenges will kind of address that as we move forward.
Hey, everyone. I would like to say thank you for the presentation, because it felt very calming for me, like a nice calm, clear presentation. It was fabulous. And I originally skipped because I didn't really like have a lock on my question yet, but I, I also kind of want to double down on Vice President Wyson Moore's ideas on like what was done to get such great participation in some areas from teachers, and then what we've learned from that to then push that forward to help this grow.
Okay, great. So trying out our new process here. You all now get a chance to respond. You've heard all a bunch of questions, you can kind of group them, respond how you like. And then after that, you want to add one? Okay, break the rules. Okay, Commissioner Lamb will be allowed to add one first, then you can answer. And then after that, if there's other things that come up, we can check in again with the board to see, or if your question didn't get answered, and you just feel like you have to get it answered, you can, you can follow up again at the end.
I'm so sorry, I did not come really prepared. One final question for consideration is, how are students accessing tutoring, or is that as supplemental support for students?
Take it away, team.
Thanks, we were just conferring who's gonna take what. We may have to pause again to continue. We'll, we'll start with Commissioner Kim's question around the minutes, since that was a question that I, while I'm new, I did read that in the report from last year. All of the math classes in six through eight, including the K8s, now have over 205 minutes. We've adjusted that. There was, there was as low as 180 last year. We adjusted that by reducing, by increasing blocks in some cases and reducing advisory. So there'll be other repercussions, but the math minutes now alongside of all the other core classes are 205 or above.
I can talk a little bit about the piloting size, and one of the, some of the things we may think may have attributed to that. So not to give too much of a teaser to October and Goal One, but one of the things we'll talk a little bit about Goal One is related to having a multi-phased approach to curriculum implementation and instructional change. And I believe really strongly that there's a phase zero that comes before that adoption. And that has to do with educator buy-in mindset around the change, and in addition, like instructional expertise. And so I think one of the things we saw really clearly with the Language Arts process is that that adoption really begins from the moment we start engaging educators in academic evaluation. And I would love everyone to care about academic evaluation as much as I do. It may not be everybody's like favorite, but that opportunity to train educators in how to evaluate curriculum, what high quality instructional materials should include, giving them the opportunity to have pilot, and making sure that pilot includes active feedback opportunities, where they actually feel like their experience is listened to and part of decision-making, all builds buy-in for instructional change with adoption. And I think one of the things we saw is, we had really strong engagement in data collection with Language Arts. We see a really high return for teachers, particularly at the K5 level, who piloted with us in Language Arts and said, I'm in for math, can I do it for history, social studies, when science coming back? So one is a really high rate of return. I think that's one major component. I would say one of the other pieces we saw really I would say one of the other pieces we saw really clearly at the middle school levels, you'll see we're only piloting one program, which is, you know, fairly unusual. And one of the reasons we're piloting one program is it was the highest scoring program for our educators in all but one of the criteria. And the educators felt really strongly that that program provided them with not just actually high-quality materials, but tools for differentiation, tools to use in a block setting that built on some of the complex instruction they'd worked on for years. And we had numerous educators that said, you know, oh, if you're going to pilot two, like I just really want it to be Amplified Desmos. And so I think that responsiveness and making sure that CNI has a really close relationship with school sites, it's really in touch with educators, builds on that pilot engagement so that they feel like they're part of not just the selection, but informing professional development offerings. And in our dream and what we see happening with language arts is those early adopters then become lead teachers, become coaches, become administrators, that they can lead their grade level or department team. So I do think engaging not just in math, but in a multi-content area process builds buy-in over time.
I would address two other questions. The first one being Commissioner Fisher's question about public access to data. So the district has been making available Tableau dashboard that is publicly accessible for the last several years. It is a little bit delayed because we have to wait until the aspect data is actually finalized and publicly released before we can actually make the dashboard and release it. But the dashboard is linked to on SFUSD's website, and it's fairly easily Google-able by just Googling SFUSD public dashboard. We look forward to updating it as soon as the data from last year become released publicly. Since I have the opportunity, I might as well also plug that RPA actually has been rolling out dashboards internally using the Tableau platform, and it's been received with great fanfare from administrators. Because we only have limited number of licenses that are available to principals, so principals are the ones that have access to the dashboard so far. We released it at the admin institute at the end of the summer, and everyone's been really loving it. And we look forward to building on the skills that we're developing and the style that we're developing to do more of that. And hopefully some of that will eventually get pushed out to the public as well. Second question from President Alexander about the lesson study success, which is a great, great question. And it's actually something that the lesson study team and support, in collaboration with the RPA team, is really delving into. The lesson study team has been working really deeply with a very clear and well-established logic model that goes from the work that they do to the way that teachers collaborate, to changes in student mindset, and then that leading to changes in student outcome. And the evaluation and the kind of progress monitoring and continuous improvement work has been really good at gathering data at the critical junctures of that logic model. And what's interesting is that we don't see the kind of expected changes in the ways that teachers collaborate or students' mindset, but we do see this really large and meaningful changes in student outcomes. So this year, we're really looking forward to digging deeper into uncovering some of those causal mechanisms so we can actually learn from what's working and be able to spread that.
I tried to somehow do one category connected to the challenges, the partnerships, the tutoring, and how do we manage when we don't have the same robust central office team that we used to have? So I will start with, I just named one of the biggest challenges. Not having this robust central office team that we used to have for math. How are we addressing that? We name in one of the cases so that we can provide teachers and even department chairs with specific content and follow-up connected to the deep understanding of math. We are looking forward to receiving the support from ANET, which is a national recognized organization that does work in math. The reason we went in that direction is because we were not able to hire the coaches that we needed. We are still trying to find math teachers for the classroom. So that was the immediate solution. We didn't want to stop the work because we didn't have that. So we look out for a solution. Hopefully, the contract will come to you soon. As you know, we are trying new processes for contracts approval, but hopefully it will come to you pretty soon. The team already work on it. All the vetting process has been done, and so we are hoping that we will get the next step pretty soon so for board approval. That's one key component. I will now talk about a different partnership. As you know, we have been collaborating with TNTP. And they are also providing some specific guidance so that we can look at the rubrics from content, but we also look at the rubric for specific practices. So that's what we are actually collaborating as well. And now let me go with the specific questions related to tutoring and to why a number of students didn't access. The way in which the WISENT contract works is for the number of hours students use. So last year, we did not follow up specifically with every single school in the ways that we'll engage the teachers in the classroom to have the students use it. Those hours are still available. It's not like we lost that resource. Until we exhaust those hours, we are in contract with them. So the work that we are doing right now in collaboration with our Department of Technology is to engage directly with the school sites, with the principals and with the teachers, so that we can enroll the students and the teachers in the process so that the students can have access to that. And it's students across the board. So to me prompt, our central office and the team, Ms. Grubman and Dr. Rene Marci, have already laid out all the processes centrally so that now our Department of Technology, which is a new way of doing business, is requested to be mutually and figuratively involved in the actual educational process of how we are going to engage teachers and students in that process. So that's how we are going to get the numbers. But the contract is still in place until we exhaust those hours. And I will close with the capacity and the idea of how do we manage in these times of these other challenges that we name? We will continue with the concept of professional development that you have heard. But here is another key important piece. Ms. Grubman is organizing professional learning through the department chairs at the middle school level so that those consistent professional learning sessions with the department chairs can be transferred to the teachers into the classrooms. At the elementary level, you heard the number of teachers who are now piloting. And our goal is to expand that through professional development, not through the piloting, because we already have those teachers in. But we are looking forward to incorporating more teachers into the learning processes that can help us to manage these challenges with staffing and with resources. Are there questions that we can follow up in writing as the board requests?
Sorry, so we have just?
I'm sorry. Ms. Steiner will close with student experience.
So I have a couple of things just to add, and also it relates to what Commissioner, is it Borges? Is that right? Okay, sorry, still new. I'm just going to claim that for another year. Something that you just said struck me that today I had this opportunity. I mean, I've been going to math classrooms, but today I said I'm only going to go to math classrooms. I think I was getting my brain wrapped around tonight. And two things I was thinking about. One, in the last professional learning session for principals, we had folks watch a math lesson using the Core Rubric and really examine, what are you seeing? And what kind of feedback would you give in culture of learning and essential content and academic ownership and in demonstration of learning? Then we had them come up with the calibrate. And then we had them come up across and say, what's the highest piece of feedback or the highest leverage piece of feedback you would give a teacher? So that in addition to central office, leaders are really leveraging what they know about mathematics and how they can give support, right? So it's not all falling on two people in the central office. We have instructional leaders, the principals, the assistant principals, and the department heads that can do that kind of work. And then today, when I was in classrooms, in addition to watching the different ways that Amplified Desmos is being used, some people using the technological aspect of it, some people using the paper and pencil aspect of it, some folks using, I mean, I went into one classroom where kids had these desks that they were like whiteboards, and the kids were writing on the whiteboards. And I was like, wait, your desks, you can write on the desks? So I mean, it was really very exciting. And when I started to talk to them, I talked to some seventh graders and I said, you used a different curriculum last year than you use this year. What are you seeing? And they said, you know, we really feel like math feels less pressure this year, that we understand how it's connecting from one lesson to the next, and that it feels like it goes in order. So then that prompted me to say, all right, I'm going to ask the teacher what she is thinking. And she said, what I really love about it is this. And she picked up her computer and she said, here's the kids that need help right now with this concept. She was like, they're talking at their tables, they're answering on their computers after they talk, and I can see how to follow up right away. And so to me, that answers the question around how are we going to go from being significantly off track to improving? Because if teachers know deeply what mathematical pedagogy is, and they have a curriculum that's rich and robust, and they can tell which students need additional support, then they can tailor their instruction in a different sort of way. So that's what I saw today, and I'm hoping to see more of that as I go around to see schools. So thanks for asking that question.
Yeah, and it seems like that may be part of the explanation as to why, I assume you all would say this plan is going to lead to achieving the goal, even though if you look at, you know, the slide on the results, it's, you know, we've been pretty flat basically for the first two years. But you've been laying a lot of the foundation, and now with the new curriculum, the hope is that we'll see more rapid acceleration, which again, it sounds like we have seen in some of these schools that are doing lesson study and other things. We've seen that in a couple of years, you actually can achieve the kind of results here. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Absolutely. Again, it will not be all at once, but for sure, we are making the commitment that we will follow up with these people so that you can see the results.
Just maybe in closing, I just wanted to share something that I went to my child's back-to-school night, and my child is taking calculus BC. And I would just wanted to share, it has just been through the progression of the clear supports, access, you know, throughout his educational journey in SFUSD. And that it's been really exciting to hear that, you know, at his high school, before, BC just wasn't even thought as like a possibility for students themselves. And now we're seeing actually more requests than we've had in several years, according to the math department and team at back-to-school night. And I just wanted to share that because it is young people who are embracing that their love for learning, their ability to push themselves, having the supports from their educators who are going to be wrapping their supports around their students. And I just wanted to share that tonight because while our focus is in, you know, tonight's discussion is from the elementary through K, but just to know that that will carry on for our students into their high school journey. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that's a great segue into the next monitoring report, which is college and career. So thanks, everyone, for trying out this new format. And we're also doing it obviously quicker because we have two monitoring reports tonight, and we're going back to closed session. So again, we're going to try to do this in 30 minutes. So, yeah, how long do you want? For all 30, or do you want it for your presentation? Five, okay, yeah, great. So can we do five minutes on the timer? Wonderful. So we'll do a five-minute presentation, we'll do the questions, and then the responses. And then we can do a wrap-up round.
Okay, next slide. Okay. Hi, everyone. So just to reintroduce, I'm Davina Goldwasser, High School Assistant Superintendent. And first thing I want to start off with is we're really excited that Goal 3.1 is just an opportunity to collaborate really closely across departments. And so across high school lead, across college and career readiness, student family services, and research planning and assessment. And so having these goals that we landed on last year has really created these opportunities for collaboration. What we're focusing on tonight is our Focal Population EWI, which means Early Morning Indicator. So the Early Warning Indicator is an indicator for our eighth graders at the end of their eighth-grade year. And it alerts us in high school around challenges that these students have been having. There are critical challenges in attendance and GPA, grade point average. And in order to have this indicator, you can have both challenges, both GPA and attendance, or just one, and you would still be in this focal population. Next slide. So our goal, this is really what our goal was at the end of last school year. So the goal at the end of last school year was for us to reach a 25% exit rate. And we fell short of that, and we were at a 19% exit rate. So that means that students that had come in as eighth graders over the course of their ninth-grade year, that is the percentage of students that completed their ninth-grade year without that, without being a part of that focal population anymore if they exited. Next slide. To break it down in simpler terms, this is last year's numbers. So we're talking about last year's ninth graders. So 3,645 ninth graders. So that's kind of the general population of ninth graders. Within that, we had 367 students entering the ninth grade with this EWI marker, this focal population. The goal was that 25% exited, which to break it down is 91 students. And 19% is what actually exited, and that was 65 students. So while we celebrate that 65 students across our high schools who came in with these challenges, we're really able to get on track in high school, and we found some supports for them. We didn't reach all 91 at that point, but still working with them now that they're 10th graders. Next slide. Okay, so the work of last year, that was the first year of this goal. So we were really in a learning phase, and we had differing strategies across our high schools because we were still learning. All of our high schools, though, were doing progress monitoring last year through their coordinated care team at a minimum. And some of them were also working through departments, counseling teams, and instructional leadership teams. We worked to identify the strategies that school sites were implementing that were having a positive impact on students exiting the EWI list so that we could replicate that this year when we make our plans. Exciting. Okay, so what is in process for this year's work? So in different buckets, looking at this through the lens of school-level work, student level, and site leader work, looking at that from all angles. So at the school level, we have our coordinated care teams that are doing progress monitoring. Most of our high schools now have a seven-period schedule, which is allowing for increased common planning time for teachers to work together, which we hope will lead to some instructional improvement, some strategies to really look at how all students are doing, specifically our focal populations, and share those strategies. Every single high school has an EWI plan that they worked on at All Admin Institute, where they reflected on their strategies from last year and shared promising practices which influenced their plan. And their strategies are specific to GPA and then other plans specific to increasing attendance. And they also have planned a range of community activities at the school level. For students, students are receiving tutoring. There's one-on-one case management that our counselors are being trained centrally to provide to students and how they're having those conferences with our students and our parents. We have strategic assignment of student course schedules. We have, and then for students, a positive impact of the seven periods is that they have multiple opportunities to earn credits at their high school where they're at, which positively impacts their GPA. So if they didn't have success with a particular course, instead of having to do credit recovery outside of school hours, they have that opened up in their school schedule where they can be taking courses again and seeing the material again to earn credits. And also more credit recovery opportunities if needed during the school day. On the site leader front, in planning for the year, like I said, we launched the year with really doing a deep-dive analysis in what was working, what wasn't. And then, this is the last time. So the thing that we're most excited about is that one of the things that the site leaders told us is that they want things that the site leaders told us is that they wanted more support with progress monitoring, because what we noticed last year when we reported to you, we had greater success at the beginning of the school year. And then, the students that were exiting at the beginning of the school year, some of those students ended up not exiting by the time that the school year was over. So this school year, after every marking period, we are meeting with site leaders to do a deep dive into students' grades, and looking at that analysis and their attendance. And also doing some grading for equity work that I can talk about, and some intentionality around how we're doing instructional walkthroughs.
Great, thank you so much. All right, let's go to board questions or comments. Are there, who would like to start? Okay, great. We'll start at that end and go this way. Thanks, thanks, and go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. I like to start this time. My comment, and my question is more catered toward the seven-period schedule, the in-process stuff that's going on now in the seven-period schedule. Being a student at Washington, I had the six-period schedule in sophomore year, and then now moving into now my junior year, the seven-period schedule, it can be a lot. And as a student, I actually chose to have a, take a TA period instead, so I have like, sort of like more of a break. Because seven periods of like, all curriculum can be challenging, and it's sort of, I think, the culture that we're, that we're building to take like, seven academically challenging classes, and sometimes that can be really hard. And I know that there's supports like tutoring and counseling that can happen in school sites, but I just want to know if there's anything specific now that there's a seven-period schedule format that we're doing across school sites that can help cater to students who need help, given that this is a new and big change for a lot of schools.
Commissioner Bogus? Okay. Commissioner Kim?
Thank you so much. This is in part like a reflection, and I'm curious to hear your reflections of my reflection. What I think, when I'm reviewing Goal Two report, and then reflecting on Goal Three report, one thing that I am reflecting on is how much K8, our strategy, is thinking about content and curriculum implementation, and how that differs a little bit from our high school content work right now. Well, rather, I'm just not hearing as much about the content emphasis in high school, grades nine through 12. And I'm curious, recognizing just kind of the limitations we have around staff funding and et cetera for curricular resources at the high school level, and also the quality of available resources out there. I'm just struck by how the conversation at the high school level isn't really focused as much on content. And so I'm curious, like, what is the strategy around that right now, knowing that all of this is really helpful, and thinking through early warning indicators is important, and also, the content at the high school level is, in fact, probably a little bit even more complex than the K8 level, given that a lack of a common shared curriculum doesn't exist in the high school level? Or maybe that's an assumption, I don't know. So I guess that's one of my questions, is like, what is the orientation around content knowledge development at the high school level? What does curriculum implementation look like, if at all? And just like, what is the status of that?
Thank you. I have a question. I mean, the numbers suggest that it's been either slight dips or stagnant. And I know that the report itself gives some interpretation. And you talked about how part of it, you've gotten feedback on the, sort of the monitoring itself. And I'm wondering if there is, if there's other sort of hypotheses that you all have about, about the fact that it's, we're just sort of flat? And what, in addition to the increased monitoring and sharing earlier on, to make sure that it's, it's continuous and goes throughout the year, if there's anything else that you all are contemplating?
And I have two questions. One is, if you look at the, if we look at the data on interim Goal 3.1, I think, as you mentioned, someone may have mentioned this, that back in 2019, it was 28% the exit rate, and now we're down to 20%, 19%. I'm curious, what, do we have any analysis of why it was better back in 2019? So that's one question. And my second question is sort of, I think, maybe somewhat similar to Commissioner Kim's. I was struck, and I was struck by this actually, the last time we reviewed this goal too, in the emphasis on sort of case management, coordinated care team, tutoring, you know, course scheduling, like, all these things that are kind of around helping students, which are very, as a former high school person, like, those things are all really, really important, of like, helping students kind of get to school, get into class, be motivated, all those things. But what about what's happening in the classroom, right? And are there things that, because, as a high school educator, also, I know that one of the reasons young people stop coming to school is because they don't feel successful, right? Or they feel dumb, or they feel like, it's not for me, or, you know, so I'm curious. I do have a few more seconds, because that was our, that was your time too, so I just forgot, sorry. How do I turn it off? So yeah, I'm just curious about that, of like, what are there, what are you all thinking about what happens in the classroom?
I guess my question is around the EWI goal of 91 students or 25% exit goal, and only 19% actually exited, which is 65 students. When you look at those students, is there something in common, whether it's the school they're, the schools they're attending, or is there something, or some things that we're seeing that we can replicate throughout the other schools, or with other students? Because I think, well, Commissioner, or President Alexander referenced that we were doing better up until 2019 in this regard, and it seems like we've, we've taken a dip, but it's been really, hasn't grown that exit rate over time. So maybe if we look at the students who have actually exited, and, and can tweeze out what's happened with them, we can maybe replicate some of the best practices.
Thank you so much. I'm very curious about the counselor training. I know that is a major approach and shift around the training pieces. I'm curious around what you all have learned thus far around, you know, when we're thinking about it at a systems level, across all, like, a high school vision, right? We've talked a lot about that over the years, and how of the intersectionality of teams at the site level with that specific strategy approach, collaboration with counselors. What are we learning thus far?
I appreciate the recognition in the presentation that this is new, and we still have a lot to learn about EWI and building the best practices, to Commissioner Sanchez's point. He stole my thunder, that was going to be my question. I'm very interested in learning more about the grading for equity, and what that means, and making sure, making sure that that means that all of our teachers and students, and I think I've heard this articulated in the past, what this means is, we have high standards for our students. It's not lowering the bar and lowering what we expect our students to be able to learn and do. It's, we scaffold, it's, you know, we differentiate, it's, we're doing, I just, that to me, I want to make sure, across all of our focal populations, that we, grading for equity means keeping the high standards, just providing more differentiated support. And so I'd love to see more of what that actually looks like.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. Commissioner Bogus, so that's right, you have to, forgot we skipped you. Go ahead.
No worries. Thank you for letting me take a moment. I guess I'm curious if you could talk about whether or not there is, I guess, consistency amongst the subgroups that have been identified, as far as like, their success rate, and if the 19% that is our actual, is that reflected for each group, or is there like, a variance where some groups are lower, some groups are higher, as far as them exiting? And if we have that, I would just love to kind of see a breakdown of that for all the groups listed on the supplemental side, or the additional slide with the subgroups of shares of students and EWI. Thank you.
All right. So now, we have about 15 minutes, and so I'll let you all take, you know, 10 or so to do the responses, and then if there's closing questions or follow-up comments from board members, we can wrap up with that.
I'll let Ben coordinate, because I did want to respond to Langston, just, I always appreciate hearing the student experience. And so, that is a big move we made at many schools to have the seven-period day. But it's interesting, and Ms. Goldwasser can speak more, but the intention was actually to provide a greater breadth of opportunities, so not just seven academically rigorous classes, we want our students to engage in that, but maybe an additional elective, credit recovery to get back on, to get back on track, or if there's any internship possibilities, or, so like, so it would be really good to understand students' experience. We, you speak to the kind of environment that I know many, you know, when we talk about a college-going culture of taking more and more and more of courses, but I think the idea is to create a balance, that actually allows there to be some balance and explore your interests, thinking you were on the high school task force, right? We talked about kids wanting to have different opportunities to really discover their passion. Our thinking is that an extra period will allow for that. But it's interesting to hear how, you know, first semester, and you're a junior, right? First semester, junior year, you're, you know, you saw it. So we'll need to learn about that. But in terms of the, it being a strategy to meet our goal, it does give us a lot more flexibility, particularly for students who need that extra course, you know, course credit, or for students who want to be in a career pathway, but also want to take music, right? And so, I'll stop there, so they can get the remaining time.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm just looking for some patterns across the questions that were asked. To follow up first on the seven period, we would love to share back kind of what we've learned, because this year, it was really just trying to create that structure across schools. And right now, we have some schools doing office hours, some schools doing a range of different things. And so it would be great to get student feedback, maybe before second semester, where we can hear more about how that's going. And the biggest thing that we've been focusing on is the teacher collaboration piece, with how that extra period has freed up some teacher unassigned time, and more opportunities for teachers to collaborate during the school day, and share practices. And how that relates to this question around content, is that we're really excited that this year, high school is now a part of the STAR assessments. We were not before. So for ELA and math, we now are a part of that work, just like PKA was a part of that work. And so this is the first year that we are really drilling down on that. And so, again, with that extra period, for teachers to work together, they can be comparing how students are doing, you know, strategies when they see students doing well, also look at the very specific data of focal population. So that is something new, that is definitely sort of grounded in those academics. I'd love to, at another time, do a kind of a deeper presentation around how that grading for equity work is going. It's a year-long learning strand for all our assistant principals, with the hopes of, over the summer, doing an institute for instructional leadership teams that are interested and ready to dive deep together over the summer around that work. But so, I'd love to share about that at another time. And to address the specific work that we're learning in terms of our subgroups, I'll let Patrick talk about that. We have that in our appendix slides now.
Yeah, so one of the themes that I kind of heard from several of the questions and comments was around the different subgroups, and also, at the same time, looking at how, looking at how students that were successful and trying to replicate some of the best practices. So we've, we actually, when we were preparing this report, we started to break down our, our information into the different subgroups. So number one, so that we could see our current students, and how we can focus on those. But then also, looking back, as was mentioned, you know, in 2019, we had a 28% rate, and in the past two years, it's been sort of kind of flat. But then also, were there different subgroups, or were there different schools or school sites that maybe had more success or less success? And can we look at those, replicate those? And so that is our plan, moving forward, to dig deeper into the data, and hone in on what were those things that we, we can learn from, so that, like Davina said, in these checkpoints that we're going to do throughout the school year, we can highlight those, highlight those successes that we are going to identify, once we start honing in on the data more deeply. But we did break out the data in a couple of different ways. One of the ways we broke it down is how many of the students that are on the current EWI list for this year have an IEP. We also broke down the data based on, why are they on the, on the EWI list? So we can focus in on, is it attendance, or is it GPA, or is it both? So that we can hone in our strategies where it's most needed.
In terms of patterns, we are really excited about meeting with students who did exit this year. So we didn't have those exit rates until August. So a month into school now would be a great time for us, as we're still honing in on the strategies and the plans, to learn more really about those successes. We did not see a connection between, there's also a slide around schools and what their rates were. We did not see a connection between kind of how a school was structured. So we're still digging into that, based, there wasn't a connection based on school size, or other factors, in terms of the percentages of how many students they were able to exit. But we're still diving into that and trying to learn more. Let's see everything. Yeah.
Okay, so follow-ups from board members? Commissioner Fisher, and then Commissioner Bogus? Yeah, and then Commissioner Wismar? Everyone, everyone wants to get follow-ups. Go ahead, Commissioner Fisher. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Bogus.
Yeah, it seems like you may have the slide, but would you be willing to show? We don't have access to those additional slides that you, we do. Oh, I didn't see them. Okay, the one that I'm looking at, only stopped at 21.
Yeah, we have up to slide 21 on board talks.
Yeah. No worries. So if you could share that right now, I'd really appreciate if you could show, I guess, kind of the breakdown.
Does, are you showing something right now, or no? It's okay if you're not. Commissioner Kim, do you want to follow up, and then we'll come back to this? It's okay, we'll figure it out. But let's go on to the next question or comment.
This is, I think, thank you so much for the additional information. I think, frankly, I think this, this question is maybe more for the board to discuss. What I'm trying to think through right now is the, what I perceive to be the very real capacity constraints of being able to invest deeply in certain areas of work in high school, namely around curriculum, quality implementation, et cetera, with the tensions that we have as a board around somewhat guidance around shrinking our central office staff, and, and our realities of our budget situation. And so I think I'm just acknowledging that tension right now of like, you know, frankly, when I hear that there's only one central office math manager at, at the K8 level, I, and we have three different curricula that we're piloting, I have some concerns around the capacity of our central office to be able to execute effectively on any one of those, given the intense amount of content knowledge that needs to be learned, both by just math content, but also the content that's very real and structured in a curriculum. And then at the high school level, I just continue to see a trend of, of just, again, the tension here that we have, of the realities of we are in the financial picture, with what we're desiring to do with our shifts in instructional practice. And I guess I'm just, I'm grappling with that. And what does that mean, then, in terms of the priorities we have? The thing that I go back to is, not to draw this into the conversation or resource alignment initiative, but we did, I mean, one of those is around a central office reorganization. And I'm curious to know, then, like, in what ways are we setting our central office up, so that we can effectively support the content work that we know we want to do, but we are, but with the lack of central office capacity, right? I just have questions about that, right? And so that's like, one reflection that I have, and this is kind of now leading into a very, another board, I think, question and conversation around, like, when we, when we are experiencing a lack of progress in the way that we want to see, how, in what, where do we have the conversation in discussing how the strategies that we're deploying right now inform the goal targets that we set, right? And I don't know when that happens, right? So So I'm just kind of bridging now since we had two presentations here. I don't know of many districts that have experienced a significant growth in student outcomes in their first year of curriculum adoption, right? So the fact that we're expecting to 5% increase in student outcomes in just one year of piloting curricula seems like a tall feat for us. And if we're at a high school level, not able to have a conversation around instructional practices and curriculum at the high school level because of the very real financial challenges and capacity that we're in, are we still expecting to see the same amount of growth that we're trying to see as well? So I, I think I'm just like, it's, I'm, that was kind of a little bit of word vomit, but I'm processing all of that right now and it, and it's a question that I'm just putting out there.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I think those are good questions, which we're not going to answer in the next four minutes, but I, but I think that this, I think, and I have similar ones too, so just to say, I think, and especially, I mean, and I think this was actually sort of acknowledged in the report, it seems like this, it's, I think in the report it said, goals one and two were developed and refined earlier, and I think I can tell, right? I mean, I think that, and so just to be real, I think again, like, this, to me, it makes sense as to where we're at on this goal as compared to the other ones, it feels like there's been less capacity, less, less work. And that's, you know, that is what it is. And I think to Commissioner Kim's point, I think maybe this is something that the superintendent and board need to talk through in terms of, again, being real and realistic about what's possible and what our priorities are, I think is really important. So we don't, because we don't want to be in a position of just saying, oh, you've got to do everything, right? Because that's, we know that's not possible. And so, again, not, not for solving in the next three minutes, but maybe for putting on the table for a future conversation. I don't know if other, did you have something? You sure? Okay. Anyone else have a burning closing comment? And then we're going to wrap up.
I think historically, gosh, it's been more than five years now, I remember sitting on the attendance working group committee district-wide. And one of the things that we were looking at is that so many of the resources that we offer as a district, including credit recovery, are the wait-to-fail model, right? That you, that you have to fail with a D or NF before you have access to credit recovery. Like, there's so many, so many other services that we provide to students, you know, once they've dropped out of school in order to get them back in. And so I think to some of this, this thoughtful, intentional, strategic planning, are there services and supports and wraparounds like that that maybe we could not let students wait to fail before we provide access to them? So I just, credit recovery is, was one we discussed specifically at the attendance working group, and so it got me thinking about that.
Commissioner Bogus?
Thank you for sharing the slides with the additional data. I think just in, looking at the data, just curious, what specific strategies are there for African-American students that I think can be lifted up for, I guess, short-term shifts, seeing that they're, they kind of represent a largest percent of their subgroup kind of being presently shown and one of the lowest groups as far as exit rates? I mean, just kind of like that balance from in-group rate of 25.7, but an exit rate of 7.8%.
Is there any thinking on that question up to now? Or is that something you want to?
I think it'd be great for us to follow up because schools, one of the issues right now that we're grappling with is really comparing those strategies across schools. And so in order to collect that and really speak, you know, from an informed stance of what all schools are doing, because schools are doing different things and trying out different plans, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you. So let's, I don't recall on the board monitoring calendar when the next time is for this goal, but.
February.
February, thank you, good. So maybe we should follow up even before then and, and get clarity on kind of, yeah, just some clarity on some of these questions around what would be most useful for the board and what's realistic, right? So that we have, you know, kind of level set on some of the expectations that, as some of the commissioners have brought up, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much, really appreciate it. And thanks everyone for trying this new approach. And let's continue, give us feedback and we'll keep moving forward. And time's up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move now to the consent calendar. Item F, are there any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
No.
Can I get a motion in a second on the consent calendar? I should have asked that first.
So moved.
Second.
Before we do that, I had two items that I need to withdraw, because I couldn't vote on the MOU consent items.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so this was the same thing from last time.
Same thing from last time, okay. Do you want to say the ones?
I will need to recuse myself from discussion and vote on item F6, item 11 and 12 regarding San Francisco Symphony.
Okay. So are you doing the vote?
Yes.
Okay, so this vote, how do you want to do it? Do you want to do two separate votes or just state that Commissioner Kim is recusing?
We've already said, say that he's recusing himself from voting on 11 and 12 and approving the others. Correct.
Okay, all right. So it's roll call that way.
So I'm sorry, I missed the motion in second, our leader, our Commissioner Fisher, and then, thank you. All right. Commissioner Bogus?
No.
No on the consent calendar, thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim, while recusing yourself from F6, 11 and 12?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner, or President Alexander?
Yes.
Six ayes passes.
All right, thank you very much. Now we are going to go, return to closed session. And then after closed session, we will report out from closed session. So the meeting is going, is now going into recess to return to closed session at 8:47 I now reconvene to open session at 10:55 PM. And here is the report out from closed session. Excuse me, in the matter of Student GB versus SFUSD OAH case number 2024080362, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In one matter of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven ayes gives direction to the general counsel. And in one matter of public employee discipline dismissal release, the board by a vote of seven ayes approved a proposed statement of charges against a permanent certificated employee of the district. Thank you very much, and at 10:55 PM, this meeting is adjourned.
Can I also thank our interpreters for staying here? I see our ASL interpreter on the screen and I'm sure our language interpreters are here as well, so just thank you very much for still being with us.
And thank you, Judson.